All right, welcome, December nineteenth, planning board. Moving minutes. Do those? Any questions, comments? Visions? Motion to move minutes. Other? A favor? Same. Same, that was either. All right. We have a lot of reading to do tonight.
No work sessions.
No work sessions this week. First off, little way. This is a recommendation to.
Okay, good.
An approval for a site sign. You talked about this, are there any questions on this one? The only condition that we're going to put in here is that the average in what we've been town. Final. Around. There are no questions or comments on it, I'm just gonna go ahead and read the motion. Motion to approve the monument sign as presented on plan dated twelve eighteen two thousand four. The approval of this sign and location is a modification to the existing site plan, approval for the site and all conditions of that approval are in full force in effect. Except as herein modified, landscaping of the baseless sign shall be approved deconstructively by the Department of Finance. Motion to approve. Kevin? Second, favor. Okay, crossbow. Kevin did. Crossbow Park. We also discussed this, it's the only question that we have for them to. It's that still mulched. Sidewalk pad, which they did. The dump is defined.
Yep.
This looks like. Any additional questions on that? Need a modification or motion here. Motion to approve the modification of the site plan dated seven twenty seven twenty twenty three, has now modified per site plan dated twelve ten twenty twenty four. With EV charger cut sheet, cut sheets dated eleven twenty one twenty twenty four. This is a plan to add EV charging stations to the site, this board finds that the charging stations being single mendered charging stations are appropriate for the use which is from Riddens. Home recite. Further, the parking counts of the prior approval are still satisfied as the total number of parking spaces required remains intact and are being converted to EV charging parking spaces for the specific use of this tenant. The SEAF dated eleven twenty one twenty twenty four has been reviewed. Has an unlisted action under secret. And this board issued a negative secret declaration, same. Site plan approval dated seven twenty seven twenty three is in full force in effect, including all conditions therein, except that it's just if we modify here and. Motion to approve. Is. Second, favor. Thank you.
No, they're doing great.
Next up. Chain Plaza. This one here was for multi tenant sign. Is there?
Yeah.
Applicant here, yep.
Yep, I'm right here.
Any further discussion on this one? Motion to approve the multi tenant sign package as presented, which consists of the following, site plan dated twelve sixteen twenty twenty four, the fixture specs last dated twelve two twenty twenty four. The light spillage report dated eleven eleven twenty twenty four, and the science specifications labeled as option one. System layer heads across all signs as shown, and dated five eight twenty twenty four with the following findings and conditions. This site presents a challenge that although the plaza appears as a single plaza, it has separate ownership. And there are two plazas with shared access and parking, this applicant is working with the board and presents a multi tenant sign package and accompanying lighting that will be compatible with the lighting sign package which exists on the plaza to the east. And as previously approved by this board, reduce lights village and glare, the applicant must implement mitigation strategy recommended in the light spillage report, the applicant must apply with the office planning zoning for installation percentage and performance for this multi tenant sign package at the time of initial installation signage and change of any tenant to assure the signage and your performance for the multi tenant sign package here approved. No changes to the multi tenant sign package requirements can be made without further review and approval of this board. Any common questions, discussion? Motion to approve. Play. Second, favor. Minutes, thank you. Solvay Bank. An applicant present for Solvay?
Yes.
So. Give us kind of a two minute overview on any modifications.
Well, we've submitted a bunch of new documents relative to the drainage and the storm water plan. We've also been working on the lighting quite extensively over the past couple of weeks. We don't have a model that I can show you the present lighting. As well as I can also show you if we matched the plaza lighting that's there with, I have both models I could open. I don't know if the board has any interest in that, I have a couple of prints that I could share with you. And these are some updates that we looked at today, and there's a couple renderings.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind going through the two matches in short.
Sure, you mean to suggest too that the engineering is still being reviewed and submitted?
Like stuff has changed?
No, no, no. It just says.
No, so yeah, let me re- let me rephrase that. So my name is Bill Murphy Jr., I'm from Space Architectural Studio. There, there's a, there's an option two and an option one, okay, option one is the present proposal that's set in front of you. That is there, option two is a new layout that you're just seeing for the first time tonight.
Can we do a little copy of this? Show our engineers on.
Do I have a single document?
Yeah.
Sharing your screens? Yeah.
I'm gonna probably say no. Yeah, I'm gonna probably say no, I do not have. I can share my screen and.
That would be great, just cause we're on church.
Yeah, could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, yep, yeah, I am here, so I'm listening then, thanks.
Thank you, Mark, just clarify that other than the lighting, the engineering has been approved, right?
Yes.
And that request, for sure.
So, and Eric, you were looking at the pole heights and?
The pole heights, yes, I didn't see the updated with the thirty three foot pole, but we were looking at the lighting units. Meeting the state requirements and the town code, I haven't seen this most recent update. So this model that's up on the screen right now is the model of the the lighting package that is presently proposed. This has two separate pole locations, one in very close proximity to the ATM. Specifically to target the New York State ATM law and what those minimum requirements are. This also has a second pole out a little further that helps to further illuminate the parking area of the site. What you can see is how dark other areas of our site are, we're not overlit in any way, we're extremely, I think, balanced. If, if I take the time forward, you'll see when I come into right here. Kind of see that edge where it glows, we're just outside the tree line, which is where I need to keep that one foot candle. That's this area right here. The tree line also does a great deal to block the lights. I know we're slightly above the eight foot candles.
But those look like deciduous trees, right? They don't look like conifers, so.
There, there's conifers all around the, the drive through, and then there's the deciduous trees that exist down the street.
Right, but what does it look like with no leaves? They're not gonna block the light when they don't have leaves.
Uh, you're, you're correct, they're not gonna knock it down as much, that's correct, there's also a section there code that I'd like to just make sure that everybody's aware of, and it is on the print that I just gave you. It has to do with where we have an ATM that's twenty four hour access and how in that area we can, we can go up the numbers a little bit to meet the one foot. We have to throw slight sixty feet out from the ATM. It's kind of hard to do that in any other way than using a whole light type of structure. So although this light is different than the rest of the plaza, the other alternative would be to continue this pacing with another single two height fixture. That one doesn't really work as well as I might suspect that it could have. It would need more tweaking, I do have that model as well. If that, if there's any interest, when you go down to ground level and look at this. Sorry, I gotta just get through the tree here. Here we stop. Not really that bright. There's not excessive canopy lighting, there, I mean, we're really in a pretty dimly lit area right here around the immediate surrounding of the ATM. As you see the upper body, you're gonna do a great job of screening a lot of this extra lighting, and then there you can also see the pole base, which is just trying to illuminate that one foot candle. And, and we're pretty close, we're, we're very close to zero foot candle at the edge, but in that one property line spot, we're, we're about done putting it.
Do you have a photometric plan that gives you the actual light levels?
Yeah, so we've submitted the photometric plans, we've submitted both the five foot level and the ground level. There's three different diameters for the ATM. And two of those are taken at one. The town code's taken at ground level, which we provided.
Are you able to share those and put those up for, for viewing?
Uh, I, we've submitted them previously, we've definitely submitted them, I, I don't have them.
Are these the same ones as?
Yeah, the, yeah, those, those haven't changed, there's no change to the ones, like those, I, we could put those up.
We do have those.
Yep.
Can you stop sharing?
Are you seeing those?
Yeah, I have, and, and I guess what my, what the concern is, is, I mean, these are, these are very nice models. But, you know, the, the code has numerical limits, as, as does the, the state banking. And, and the values in the photometrics are, are well, well above those, 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 those limits.
So we're, we're using the most minimum wattage of the LED fixture at the twenty five foot pole height. We're, we're using a small LED. We've submitted the cut sheets, I have them here, I could call them out, but you know, we, we just are trying to make sure that the ATM is safe, the last thing we want is customers to be coming to the ATM and not feel safe utilizing the facility. We're, we're not trying to illuminate more area than we should. The, the pole lights are.
It's the issue that it's one pole, we're creating a pretty intense hotspot. And that's exceeding both the town and the state codes, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
No, it's not as much the pole. Is, and so this is the five, five foot level. The town's code is at ground level, so go to the next sheet.
Yeah, this is at five feet.
And these, this, I'm gonna. Yeah, so, so that, that's, that's, yeah, so that's, that's a ground level, this is what the town code goes by. Uh, a, a, and.
And I should, I should add, we did make one slight change that you'll see on yours, and it's in this canopy, we had four can lights in here, which would be the preference. The numbers you're looking at have two lights in the can. Two recessed can lights in the canopy.
What numbers we're looking at?
On the, there's an eleven by seventeen printout that I go out, that I don't have. That I don't have electronically for you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so so, so this plan here.
You scroll to the top.
And, and if you zoom in underneath with the canopy area there. Yeah, I mean, you've got a maximum of ninety three, and the code allows for twelve. And, and you're, the, 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 the comment relative to the code saying that it allows for more foot candles, that's the twelve. And that's in the immediate area of the ATM, not the remainder of the site, so you know, again, you, the twelve would be the max allowed by the town's code. Again, and, and, and you've got ninety three, forty nine, I don't have your new plan, so I can't speak to what those numbers are. But I would, I would expect it to be less, but I, I guess not having the ability, and so all I can say is, is that it significantly exceeds what's allowed by, by the code, it, the, the other thing I'll note is it, it, there's some, kind of some strange anomalies with this photometric plan that if you go towards the road with this. Just move it up or down.
Yeah, wherever he wants to go.
There, there you go, yeah, yeah, and so the, the purple mass there next to the thirteen point six is where the light pole is.
That's correct.
And then you've got so thirteen point six immediately next to the pole and a fifteen point nine further away.
Yeah, I see that, that, that's just the way the IES file is, is computing, I'm not, I'm not sure how or why, but that's what's happening.
Yeah.
Nineteen is there too, spread.
Yeah, and, and, and the, and the five point six at the property line, I mean, you, you're supposed to be down at one around there, so you know, is it oriented correctly, so I, I understand you have different you know, throws and whatever, but you know, so it, bottom line, I guess if the board is asking me you know, again, I don't have the other plan, but these numbers significantly exceed what's allowed by the town's code, the, the other thing I'd say is if you could just switch, so you look at these numbers here. These are at ground level. If you go to the other plan.
The five foot plan.
Yeah.
That is, I, it, we, we definitely have a concern on the bank side, just, just to make sure this is illuminated safely to be.
Well, I mean, but, but this, there, there's, the, the state levels, quite honestly, it's five foot candles within a five foot radius of the and, and you've got these radii shown on your plans. It, it's five foot candles within a five foot, this is the state's requirement. It's five foot candles within a five foot radius. Uh, I believe two foot candles within the thirty and one within the sixty foot radius, so, so you're far exceeding those also.
We're not in the, in the one foot, so if you go to the five foot, that's where the, the sixty foot circle is, and that's where we have to be one foot handle. We have areas there where we're barely one foot handle, and I, I know we're odd in some areas, but we're, we're just trying to achieve the one foot handle.
And, and, and quite honestly, if you look at the things, it says, it says sixty foot within an unobstructed view. Unobstructed, the, the areas where you're down to one are obstructed.
I, I don't believe, so the ATM is, is here, and, and where we have one is not unobstructed.
It's unobstructed from the ATM, but I, I'm not gonna get into that argument, but I, I'm just gonna say that you could, and, and so here, here are these numbers. The five foot level is less than the ground level, how, how do you explain that?
Well, the, it, it has to do with refle度ns off of the, the tarvia. Or, or hitting the, the five foot plane first is, is what I would say.
Well, the closer you are to the light source the brighter it would be, I would think.
Mark, let me, how do you suggest that, that we resolve this, and, and this is up to the, the chair, obviously. If he wants to move forward with an approval and leave out the site lighting, how would you propose this be resolved?
Well, you know, again, all, I, I guess what I can say is that, I mean, I think the board can look at this and see that it you know generally exceeds by what I would consider to be a significant amount, the both the banking law requirements and the code requirements. The town code requirements. The applicant seems to be indicating that they've taken all due diligence and they can't comply with it. So gotta decide are you gonna accept that or send them back to the drawing board to, to come up with something that's closer to being compliant? That's, that's the best I can offer for a resolution.
Yeah, I think at this point.
And would that have an impact on the site plan design itself, or is it just a matter of?
Just the lighting.
This should just be positioning, picture collection and positioning, is there a, a a reference of what would be best suited in the town of Duitt, like, I, I I can't find with just even a single light fixture right below, I, I can't get that to less than eight. Like, I can't do it.
It's not, it's not less than eight, it's, it's twelve, I mean, again, the max can go up to twelve.
ATM one, but not in the part like I'm not sure how, how you're lighting.
Who's doing your, your lighting?
We have a software called Illum Tools. We input the IES files and put it at the correct height, and it auto computes it, it's, it's running off the model that I'm, I'm sharing. I'm happy to work with a vendor, but we're not quite at that level yet, we're not at, I mean, we're getting ready.
So what I think, I mean, this is certainly up to discussion, but what I'd like to suggest is that we move forward with approval of the site plan contingent on
Meeting.
Yeah.
To meeting the company.
Revision of the lighting plan, work with the vendor.
Sure.
Do what needs to be done to satisfy the lighting requirements.
Okay.
Back to support, present back to support that has been.
The lighting, the lighting only. But everything else, we're gonna keep it going and.
The site lighting.
Okay.
This will need to be.
We can, we can get you an update from the final vendor that would show it in compliance prior to it obviously being installed.
I'd like to try and do it sooner than that.
Okay, we will, we'll work diligently to get it to you very quick. With the holiday, if, if I can just.
Do you anticipate pulling a permit on this?
Probably sometime February timeline, we're, we're basically looking to start when the ground falls.
Right, so in January.
I just, with the holiday, I gotta line up a couple.
The holiday, what with the vendor.
Yep.
Work it out. Try and get back in front of us, you know, end of January, first part of February, one of those meetings. Get that approved as well, so you've got a clean slate going forward.
Okay.
Fair.
I think so, I just, I, I, I've, I've tried a lot of different light fixtures, a lot of different lights. I, I think that the eight foot candles are the top one to hit with the new LED style fixtures that most people are utilizing today.
That good with this board? One, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna go ahead and read a motion. Any further discussion? Uh, so we'll do a motion to approve the site plan last dated twelve sixteen twenty twenty four. All in additional statements, utility installing our plan dated twelve twelve twenty twenty four, and lighting plan dated twelve nineteen twenty twenty four.
We're taking off that lighting thing.
Oh, yes. This project presents a site improvement, which is a freestanding bank on a site where grocery store also exists. Accordingly, this project was renewed as a shopping plaza site, this approval considering the existing site as a pole, including Wegman Store on site, and the parking configurations and access, and that's an excesses. Accordingly, this approval is confirmed, is this approval is confirmation of prior segment plan approvals for Wegman Store on this site, and this approval is a modification and amendment to such plans. This applicant has worked with the board on this very tight site to present a product that will fit the site, minimize the requirement for variances and make the site work in the context of the old plaza and the needs of the banking, the customers, the partial left to work with on the site has significant presence at James Street. Entrance, this is the end of plaza site, further causing challenges with the building, drive through, and sign locations. Variance is granted by the ZBA, this plan now satisfies the various requirements of the code and presents practical and aesthetically acceptable site improvement. The baseline parking spaces for the entirety of the site prior entirety of the site per the twenty fifteen surveys, three hundred and seventy one spaces. This board finds that the number of total parking spaces of three hundred and seventy one is more than what is reasonably needed for the grocery operation, but in total is sufficient for the site, including the Solvay Bank use without need for variance per the code. There is a redistribution of parking with this improvement, with some of the spaces being on the Solvay Bank portion of the site. Plan by date is all shared carving in this blueprint, plan reflects the variances for signage and stacking as recommended by this board and PBA. The signage as presented is part of, it meets the multi tenant sign package requirements of this code. Site lighting is not approved at this time, applicant shall return to this board with a compliant lighting package. This board.
Did you wanna put a timeframe on that? Prior to coming?
Yeah, prior. Uh, this board has reviewed the SEAF and in dated June eleven twenty twenty four, and issued a negative secret declarations with this unlisted action, this board has reviewed the underwriting county planning board referral for November thirteen twenty twenty four, and notes the following with respect to the modifications therein. Number one, applicant must contact the Anadog County Department of Water, Environment Protection Will Control Division for any infrastructure related disturbance of land within the county easement prior to construction. Number two, the town has reviewed the drainage report, compliance and importance of the modifications two and three as requested. This approval is made with the further condition that this approvals plans, other submitted parking, site plan, so consignment, or chairperson. The applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Name proposed changes to digital coordination, this is global work. Materials and site land documents are subject to further site land review pursuant to the county code section. Motion to approve. Kevin? Second, favor? Great. Thank you, CEO. Most of you were game at the same time. Restoration program.
Thank you. Long name, but this peaceful name on your tongue for English.
You're gonna have to scare the smoke and stall it with me when we're done, okay?
This one, we've got our Z B A. One thing that we did wanna look out was just materials, materials to share with us.
Yes, materials, it's a.
Yeah, they haven't seen him yet, so we have some around, so if you pass those around so that the board can see them.
Yes.
Yeah. This is for exterior siding. Oh, you're talking about the sticky dough.
Yeah. So, what what's sticking out goes on here?
Well, this uh.
I I labeled them when you dropped them off and it looks like one of them.
It's on the paper there.
Okay.
Oh, this subject.
Yeah.
I am uh.
This is definitely. Yeah.
Okay.
Any questions, discussion? Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and hear the rest. The motion, motion to approve the site plan last dated twelve sixteen twenty twenty four. With the following findings and conditions, this is an application for a garage addition on the site. And other minor site improvements for permitted use, this only board of appeals granted a variance on the barrier setback for the garage. This board has reviewed the S E A S of applicant dated six nine twenty twenty four and grants a negative declaration for the um this unlisted action. This board has reviewed the Anadog County Planning Board referral for November thirteen twenty twenty four. It notes that as a condition of this approval, the applicant is required to remove its signage. In the right of way, in accordance with any further directive. Uh, the county D O T, further, this board has reviewed the stormwater plans as a. As appropriate for the site and the condition relating to the same as. You understand the removal of sign in the right of way?
There's a, there's a monument sign out front by the road.
Well, yes.
That needs to come down as part of.
It's gone?
Down already?
Yeah, it's down, it's not over there.
Okay. Yeah, that would just be a condition of part of the.
Well, it's not part of this.
Well, the the county, the county asked this board to make it a condition that it come down.
So it it's.
To be taken away.
Down and can't go back up in the right of way in there, the monument sign is gone, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's gone.
This approval is made with a further condition that this approval was for plans and other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson. This applicant now requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Changes, additions or collisions to the scope of work or materials from the site plan documents are not approved. They're subject to further site plan review pursuant to. Motion to approve. Mike. Jenny, in favor? Wonderful, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm gonna retire, but this is.
No more jobs, that's it? Thank you.
Could you write your name down? Your name, can you write it for me?
So I can put it in here. Thank you. Got it, that was your.
Okay.
So, residents here.
Thank you.
One space short.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm talking about different projects.
I can take my.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Country.
You did a good job, thanks.
So you, write it in black and finally write it in white.
Correct, um, if if Bridget will speak to it when that time comes, it seems there's some confusion on the lead system parking count.
Okay, so I just wanted to check, I don't have resolution in here, still listed as final on the agenda, but.
Correct.
Heard your email earlier, it's not, we're not doing it properly, correct, so. Bridget, are you on?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Okay, so we've got a couple of projects to view, we'll talk about residents now and then we'll see and then we'll circle back. At the end, with courtyard.
Yep.
So, let's start with residents in and talk about parking and.
Yeah, so there's just a couple of things that you guys wanted to see, we do have a note on these plans regarding the advertising, we we added that to each of the of the plan sets this for this meeting. Um, we're, we are agreeing not to do any advertising, um, our level twos aren't even actually capable of it anyway, so um. But for the D C F Cs that we're gonna look at for the next project, uh, we will not be doing any advertising. Um, yeah, so for this one, we had like made some adjustments to the plans because um. We were asked to make the spacing a little bit wider. Um, but now we're we're actually realizing that our parking count was off, so we're not gonna be able to do that, you have to go to this this page here. We were taking up two parking spaces for our gear, uh, which is the spaces all the way to the right. That big black box there, that's where our panel goes, um, we can fit that all in one parking space, we we actually typically do fit it in one parking space. So if we can just slide that all the way to the right. Then we won't won't be down a parking space, um, we don't really have any to play with, there's a a hundred and two rooms. And that's gonna be uh the amount of parking spaces that they'll they'll be after we lose lose a space.
And you found that there's a hundred and three on site.
Right.
Losing that one puts you even one or two, one or two.
Right, which is the, which is what we understand to be the requirement.
Yes.
Okay. Um, there was also a question about the drive aisle being impacted, but should not be an issue, the drive aisle is currently twenty six feet. So, um, it shouldn't be an issue to have the stations, um, where they are when the cars pull in, um, they're not gonna be impacting that at all. Um, and I'm not sure, is your, is your requirement nineteen feet for the length of a parking space, cuz the our engineers have these at twenty?
Yes, nineteen.
Okay, so we have a foot to play with anyway. Um, one other thing that we also did do is we we moved a charging station to the other side of the existing gravel area, if you see on the left hand side of that page. Um, we originally had all the parking spots in in this area and then the the gear was on the other side of the um, the other aisle. Where the transformer is located on the site, but um, we'll just continue the conduit along the fence line and put a station in there on that other side. So really, the only modification to this plan as we're looking at it is is sliding the gear over, so it's only occupying one space, a space closer to the transformer. Yep. And then I guess I'll just ask you, if you have a preference, we're gonna be, we'll have one free parking space that can be utilized by a non-E V, so. I mean, well, any of these chargers spaces could be used for non-E Vs, but as far as um, do you have a preference of where we place that that free space?
I mean, the the gray boxes at the bottom are the chargers themselves, right?
Correct.
But I think that spacing starts with the two on the left, two and so on down, your free spot would be the one right next to the panel board.
Okay, sounds great.
How, other, other than the charging unit, are they marked, are there signs, is there striping?
So we have signs that are affixed to the bollards, which are affixed to the charging station pads that state E V charging. Um, we don't do any striping, any any special striping in the spaces.
So, I mean, that's a modification there, we can get that updated and we'll deal with that in the first meeting in January and catch up.
Yeah, there is, I mean, there's, so the signs um are shown and and sign detail is shown. Uh, some point during here. Um, maybe next page or the following page? Yeah. So for this particular sign detail, we would be not um, it being exclusive for E V parking. Uh, so that we weren't prohibiting people who are not driving E Vs to park here since there is a requirement. Um, so that sign detail I can also swap out just for a standard um, electric vehicle parking, not only though, not restrictive to just E Vs.
Uh, Kenny just brought up uh.
On the previous page, when you show the unit. Right there, weren't you talking about a shorter unit and not the tall unit in that first picture?
Um, yeah, we talked about the, you guys were preferring the cable. Um, the shorter cables, so they come in two different sizes and and it makes sense here since um, the spaces aren't are close enough. But we have a fifteen foot cable option and a twenty five foot cable option, so we will make sure when the time comes that we use. Um, the smaller of those two cable management systems, because I believe that's what you said was the preference, right, for.
Yes.
Like the visual preference, correct, okay?
Any other questions? So, if you make those updates and get that resubmitted, we'll we'll look at that one in January.
Okay.
We wanna switch over to embassy suites. Hold that one up just for reference. Just to get free hotel and I tend to give it all jumbled. This was the one that was. Right at the entry there. We did landscaping around it. You had what, I think it was. Four level threes?
Yep, there's, yep, four, the four D C F Cs. And then set the seven level twos next to them, um, and we did, we did the screening. And then also we did a parking study there, at the bottom is the parking table showing the amount of spaces and what'll be. Available, um, again, here, we we will need to, we have like just a boilerplate sign and I'm I'm realizing now that we needed to swap those out because they are saying um. E V only, but we really aren't able to, there's not a surplus of parking at this site either, so we're not able to just exclusively offer those spaces to E Vs.
Okay, so that sign will not limit to just E V.
Right.
What's, what is the screening, when you just?
So we have a a plant detail on page C two, if you scroll back up, um, and I think they've called out a mountain laurel. Which is a flowering bush and I I. I'm not really a plant shrub person, so, so I um, I did a look at it online, it looks like it's something that flowers uh throughout the year and. Um, we're also happy if there's something, you know. That the board would rather see than that, but that's that's just something I think that we've used on previous projects and other towns have approved, um.
So that's provided.
There wasn't no, I think earlier this week from Eric, I'm not sure, he's in the meeting.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hi Eric, regarding additional screening around the transformer, I'm happy to talk with the with the uh utility about it, where. So we have to have ten foot screening, they they really like it around the entire, or I'm sorry, they they want clearance so that they're able to access the transformer if they need to work on it. We can work with the orientation of that of the transformer, perhaps we can turn it in a different direction, so if you wanted screening from a different. Side of the transformer, we could make it accessible from either. Um, right when you pull in there, uh, so the screen would kind of wrap around instead of being. Where where it is there currently, but I I would, I have to contact the designer and figure out. Uh, if there's a specific orientation that they have it now for access to the pole, there's there's gonna be a new pole installed.
Can you put the transformer so that it's accessed from that first stall and then you draft the. Landscaping, top, left side and bottom?
Um. I I can't answer that question, I'm just not sure because of the way we have it routed, um, I believe that would mean that this primary conduit. Would might cross over the secondary because of the um, the panel there, so we have a panel and on that panel, there's a step down transformer. That we are utilizing to power the uh level twos, they can't take three phase power, so I'd have to, I can ask, definitely, I just, I don't wanna say yes to that. Because I don't, I don't know what um, if that compromises the the conduit, the way that they have it laid.
Not with the rotating the transformer, can you just wrap the screening down the left hand side a little further out?
Well, yeah, so like we could do that, but what I'm saying is is that we can't screen all around the whole transformer, there has to be a ten foot clearance on somewhere. Um, and right now they have the clearance there, it's, there's no screening there because that's how they would access it, but I'm gonna see if we can, yeah, like rotate it forty five degrees. So that we um, perhaps can uh access it from a different location.
How do we handle if we want.
I think that's a big engineering question that they need, they need to review those transformers or. There's a lot of criteria for that layout that we gotta react to, so.
Yeah, if we could just, I mean, if we could take their transformer and rotate it um clockwise. And then they would be able to access it from the front, um, and then we could wrap that screening around. Or or even just add another tree or bush there on the corner, um, so that you wouldn't be able to see it as you were. Drive down old columnar, I think that might be an option.
Agent, that's right on the entry coming in, you're looking kind of right into that pocket where the. Transformer is.
I guess that, sorry, I misunderstood that I, this the screening, the short mountain laurel that we're talking about is really just for the transformer. That's what we're talking about, it's not really.
I think it runs down that whole lengths, right?
Yeah, but it's not screening anything.
No, it's, no, we we do, it it's not a a whole digital screen, we don't require a whole digital screen. But around the transformer, yes.
That's what we.
Yes, that's what I'm getting at, we're focusing on the transformer.
Yes, yes.
Right.
That's right.
So, it needs to be, it needs to be wrapped.
Yeah, some way. So.
I'll make sure it's screened on three sides or, but we can't screen on all four sides of it because they need to be able to access it. The um, the utility company won't, doesn't, don't allow that, there's a ten foot easement. Uh, in front of it. In front of what where the doors are, um, and we've had this issue before, where we've had to go and rip out. Um, rip out when it were our shrubbery, when you, when it's planted around it.
So, can we? Can we get this addressed and then?
If I can just, can I share my screen really quick? I just wanna show there is a lot going on here already, as far as. I just want to show there is a lot going on here already as far as um. Like there is screening, I mean, you have these two bushes and so what we're looking at is putting our gear here. Is it not sharing? Okay, I'm sorry, okay, sorry. Um, so what, you know, this is when you're pulling in, our stations are going to be here, we're going to have the continuous hedge along here. And we're looking at putting our, our equipment here, right? So we already do have some screening. But what I'm saying is, is that perhaps, like, maybe we can have the door facing this way and so we can at least be screened here. Which is, which is changing the orientation. Right now, we have this area open for them to access the transformer, but maybe we can be here. So as you're driving down. Um, you know, you're not really able to see it because we'll have screening on this side if you're driving down old columnar.
So what I'll, what I'll ask is you work through these, get this updated. How quickly can you turn that around?
Um, I'm sorry, how, how quickly can I turn around the, just changing the orientation of the transformer and, and creating screening on the other side?
Increase in the screening?
Yeah, that's a really easy, that's a very easy to uh change.
Alright, so what I'll ask is that you do that so that we can look at it and we'll, we'll take care of this one in the first meeting in January. If you can get that, that material in. And so. At least, at least by the seventh, at least by that Tuesday.
Well, the deadline's next Thursday. Does a week give you enough time? We have an extra week next week.
Yeah.
Um, the deadline is the twenty sixth with the holiday, I can try, I'll try my best.
The end of next week. Next Friday.
Yeah, that's no problem. Um, yeah, I do want to know, I'm, I won't. I won't be here and I'm taking a vacation at the beginning of January, but I'll send somebody else from my team, just so you know, I'll make sure everything's submitted before I leave, but. Um, I'll have someone else from the team come in to just speak to the next, this next phase, but I'll, I'll get them up to date.
Yeah, let's just.
We'll add screening, we'll change the orientation of the transformer.
Okay.
Great.
That was good. Um, okay, we'll move on, we'll circle back to you in a minute.
Okay, thanks.
That's it, perfect timing.
I almost came at nine.
Alright. So we, this one, this is a recommendation to the town board. Or. Re-zoning of the property. Sixty four seventy five columnar road. Converting the industrial portion in the front. To business transitional, maintaining a small silver of industrials. So that it's access through into the market business building. Um. I can work with you on this one and I got the recommendation of the town board.
Yeah, we have, so. Hey, I make a comment.
Sure.
We're still into uh, pretty young, something is their last meeting made a comment and we didn't really follow that up. It was about the uses. Um, with the change of, when we leave the. Business transitional zone the same on the property that is currently the vineyard. And we, we are, we have, we can't have multiple uses on that site. And any use that we have. Has to be residential and adjoining. Which is really going to be impossible. So if we don't subdivide that parcel, even if we left it the same zoning, it's unusable. It would just be landlocked. So my request and I submitted to. Is that we pursue, pursue the recommendation for the zoning as you submitted. However, the subdivision. Um. I would like to have the subdivision line right here, which would allow. Um. Need to put storage facilities over here. This essentially is auxiliary use to the um. Office work with the building here.
I mean, when we do that, all, I mean, if we go and we make this a business transitional. And then you're going to come back and you want to subdivide and remove that property line, ship that down, that becomes. Industrial with business transitional, what we've just done is created a split zone block. But not really. Yeah, that's not really something.
So I'm asking for, I'm, I'm trying to present a, a concern. Of a property that won't be able to be developed. And, and open it up to your ideas.
So and storage facilities are not allowed in BT.
Yeah, that's right.
Right.
Well, they are auxiliary to, I mean, that's what this is, this is doctor's warehouse.
But that's industrials, which would be business transitional.
I guess we have to think about this, not just with the sample, and it's really about the, the total use, the zoning and the site. For me, when I look at it, again, it's not just about what's there today, it's about what could be built there in the future. So I don't think it limits the development of the site, it just limits the development today.
Right.
That's the way I see it.
Well, I can't even put another building up though. If it, if it has to be residential. Multi-family residential, it has to be, uh, the building has to be connected. Yeah, no, it's, it's, you know, virtually impossible to do that.
It's been so business transition.
But I mean, I, I agree, that's, we're talking about today versus the future.
Right, right, right. Cause they, those buildings could.
They could go back.
Out and then you could build a.
Right.
Yeah.
Who's going to go on those building? The police building?
Yeah.
Well, you could sell it to a developer that finds out.
You built them, right?
Yeah.
But you knew that you were on that property when you built them.
I knew I was on what property?
The one that you're on, right?
Exactly, but I didn't, I didn't know the issue of having to connect the buildings. I mean, I know, I just. I just connected these buildings pursuant to the.
Right.
Right.
Foundation of the board. So I'm just saying it. I mean, you can turn on any building, I suppose, but you know, from a practical standpoint, if you have somebody. That is interested in developing a site that is, you know, could be landlocked for. Long as I'm here or even future, I don't see.
Right, I mean, I think the, the. The future planning for the site is business transition. Right now. We have, we have two ways that we can go about this and we talked about. All these options. I don't believe this board is going to ever recommend. Industrial into a business transitional, the diet and subdivision of that property, essentially adjoining into the industrial portion. The other option is you have a site that is. Right now, it's usable right now, you have business traditionally, you have industrials, right?
This, yeah, but this is.
But that's the current situation on, on properties. The, the solution, the future solution would be you, I have to do away with those buildings or. Do something else on that property. It doesn't change what, what you have right now today is. Is business transitional on that property.
Yeah, but remember, this was one lot.
Yes.
And this was industrial, correct? And this is business transition. So and as it existed, there were two zones on one lot.
Right, but we're not, it's not going to go industrial, we're not going to recommend that industrial without that compensation. I mean, you've heard the tenor of this board in terms of making.
Right, but I'm just trying to say, well, what, what other uses would be permitted in that? On that site. It's an acre.
Yeah. I mean, that's, you're, you're, you're saying what other uses are being allowed with the, the buildings you have on the site, but I think if you. You have to look at this as a clean slate. You can look at that whole site, business transitional and do whatever is allowed in business transitional.
That's what I'm asking, what, what would be?
List of uses in the code.
Well, from what I understand, based on our last approval, there would be nothing. It, you cannot have another use on this site other than the one that's there.
And I think you're, you're correct, but that would, that would require you to think long and hard about what you want to do on that site. Is it take those buildings down and do something bigger? Different, I mean, that's, that's future.
Well, would you be open, would, would there be? Would it be open to a special use permit?
I mean, the, the thing is that like, what the board is looking at right now is. What is appropriate for his own change? To understand, as there's a resolution, zone changes are not done in this town, okay? There has not been a zone change in a million years, um, or at least as long as I, which is a million years. Um, so there's. I mean, to see here, like, can I do this? Could I do that? Like, that's not what this board is trying to answer. What the board is trying to answer is, is it, is any zone change appropriate for this area at all? In general, right? Looking at the area and there's certain things the board has to look at. So. I can't say you're constrained, I don't know, I don't know what could go there, I, you know, like, we don't speculate about that, what we're saying is. What's right for the area? So that's what this board is doing right now. That's what's happening.
I understand that, but, but I am constrained. Okay, and based on, you know, my previous experience and based on conversations with you and. Uh, the director that, um. I'm just letting you know that here, there could be somebody right now that wants to improve the property. And create more taxable uh income for the town.
But I think the, the, the bottom line right now is we can either look at moving down the path that we were. Going at last time in terms of transitioning this to business transition, business transitional. Or you can look at continuing to keep a split zone property and add business transitional.
Yeah.
I mean, those are the two options.
I think what you're doing is you're bringing up another what if in the future I wanted and. We can't continue like that because we could always talk a million what ifs, what if you bought the lot next door? And then you would be able to sub lot it and make it with that lot and you'd be able to do anything you want. So if, there's a whole bunch of what ifs, but that's what Jamie is saying, we can't. Make our decisions based on what ifs, we have to make our decisions based on what you brought us. And what we've all talked about. At length to, to provide a recommendation for.
Alright, well, I'm just presenting the condition of what I see happening. Can proceed with the zone change request.
We don't have to, I'm not twisting your arm or anything on it.
No, I mean, that, based on what you're saying, I'm having one lot with multiple zones, I mean. This falls into that category, so probably to clean it up, you would have one business transitional zone for the whole lot. Well, actually it'd be two lots, right, because we are subdividing.
So.
But this recommendation.
Not, not right now.
No, no, right, no.
I think it does make sense that this is transitioning all. Realignment along the road makes total sense, and I, I think I'm, I'm in support of that tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
For sure. I'm just not forcing him into it. He looked hesitant when he.
No, I was, I was just trying to present that the, the way this would go. Okay, and um, you've turned on your side and that's nice.
This is you, so I'll share your screen from this.
Right, this is just, just the way the process is unfolding, right, so we're just making a regulation.
Okay. So this is a recommendation of the town board of the town of Dwyer relative to the app, or to the application. Northwood Business Center Associates LLC, owner of premises at sixty four seventy five columnar road, tax back number. Zero one eight point zero three dash zero two. And the numbers that you'll see on here, there's area one and area two, so as we reference these, you'll be able to. The applicant is the owner of the premises at sixty four seventy five columnar road. Subject parcel, which is a parcel that is currently zoned business transitional pursuant to the zoning code at the town of Dwyer. Relative to the findings here is that the applicant is also the owner of the industrial zone premise at sixty eight eighty northern boulevard. Which is both north of in part and west of in part, the subject parcel at sixty four seventy five columnar road. In the current and final application, the board currently applicant seeks. Your rezoning of area one on the attached map at sixty four seventy five columnar road to be fully transit, business transitional. It is currently a split zone block being industrial along the bulk of columnar road to the west. The result of this rezoning would maintain area two as industrial. The applicant has presented a request to the planning board for recommendation with the town board, town board for a zone change as set forth here. Town Dewey zoning code and the zoning map of the town of Dewey delineates lots in the town by zoning districts. As further defined in the town of Dewey code development. Development in the town is largely guided by the uses permitted in each zoning district. Zoning district changes carefully considered in the complete overhaul of the zoning code of the town of Dewey in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight. And there was a rezoning of certain properties at that time and in connection with the comprehensive plan of the town. The comprehensive plan was updated in twenty seventeen and no zone changes were proposed at that time. Except for townwide overlay district legislation, legislation. With the best knowledge of this board, no amendment to your zoning map, zone change has occurred to individual parcels. At the request of an applicant since at least the adoption of the revised zoning code in two thousand and eight. And given multiple year before that. Accordingly, the request of applicant herein is considered with the highest remaining it is due. The power to change zoning districts is a tremendous power that rests solely with the reasonable discretion of the town board as legislative matter. With recommendation of the planning board as the land planning arm of the town's government. In reviewing this request and undertaking the recommendation of the, to the town board, this board is charged with considering the factors as set forth. Section one ninety two dash one twenty, one of the zoning code of the town of Dewey. Subject parcel is currently a split zone parcel, zoned in part industrial and part business. With the following uses. The portion of the subject parcel that serves as a right of lay over the industrial zone portion to an adjacent parcel. Two, portion which houses. On the industrial zone portion and a banned parking lot from a prior use and three, a portion. Is partially developed in the BT zone part of the properties that are permitted residential use. In reviewing this request and undertaking the recommendation to the town board, this board is charged with. Considering the factors as set forth here in one ninety two dash one twenty one of the zoning code of town of Dewey. Item A, consistency with the town's comprehensive plan and any other adopted special area plans. The town's comprehensive plan was last updated in twenty seventeen, at that time, the character area we're in. The subject parcel situated was still identified as commercial slash industrial. While the overall comprehensive planning town may also be gleaned. From actions of the town boards since twenty seventeen, including enacting overall zoning amendments. Which have recognized the evolving nature of some areas of town as well as recognizing. General desirability of meeting demands of housing uh and a change in population, specifically. The enactment of the mixed use overlay, mixed use village overlay. In certain areas of town, boost for one of the goals in the comprehensive plan, respect housing. To provide sufficient housing choices to accommodate the families and individuals who choose to make Dewey their home. And who represent a range of socioeconomic demographics. Additionally, part of the subject parcel was already zoned and is developed as residential use, BT zone. Zoning district of town that allows multi, multi-family dwellings. While this board is aware that a change to a larger portion of the subject parcel to BT zone may not mean the multi-family use desired. The change would make it an attractive possibility and the applicant has expressed a desire to develop multi-family apartment structure in this area. The rezoning of the parcel in, at area one to BT. Rather than industrial would be consistent with the adjacent residential use increasing its compatibility and desirability. Accordingly, as to this area one, the rezoning. The rezoning to BT or business transitional would meet an overall goal of the comprehensive plan to be reasonably consistent with it. The applicant had provide previously raised the proposition of converting the northern part of area one to industrial, however, taking. An area already zoned BT and converting it to industrial would to the opposite of the goal set forth herein. And be counterproductive. The applicant has withdrawn that request. However, in the event if. As further discussed, this board goes on record as not recommending the same. Maintaining area two, which is essentially a right of way to the industrial parcel at sixty eight eighty Northern Boulevard. Maintains the portion of this corridor as industrial for the comprehensive plan. Without negatively affecting any possible business transitional development. Which be. Which would be a less intensive use of the land. Lot at the corner of Northern Boulevard and Collin Road owned by others. Would remain industrial as would sixty eight eighty Northern Boulevard. Item B, compatibility with the present zoning and conforming uses of nearby property with the character of neighborhood. The portion of area one, which largely runs on Collin Road is already part of the split zone parcel zoned. Which. Contains a large portion of BT zone property to the east of it. The bulk of the Collin Road corridor to the east is. The parcel directly across the street on Collin Road currently vacant is BT. Behind that parcel is zone single family residential R one. The premises to the west at the corner of Collin or Northern Boulevard. Is zoned industrial. Importantly, however, the that corner parcel is currently developed and used as office, which is a less intense use on the spectrum of industrial uses. It will be appropriate that the bulk of the balance subject parcel, which is already BT, be rezoned from industrial to BT. This rezoning is certainly more compatible with the adjacent land uses and character of neighboring uses of one Collin Road. And industrial uses would present. Maintaining area two at industrial service. Appropriate purpose to continue to provide the access needs of the industrial parcel to the north. Northwood Business Center. A resubdivision of area two with the sixty eight eighty Northern Boulevard should be a condition of any zone change. So that the split zone nature of the subject parcel can be resolved toward better development, planning and land use. Further, the resubdivision would prevent the creation of nonconforming industrial lot on Collin Road should area one be reserved. Maintaining the northerly. Rear of the subject parcel as BT keeps the entirety of the parcel compatible with the surrounding area. Parcel to the east of it is BT continues BT adjacent to this parcel. Expansion of the industrial air industrial area into area one as per this request of the applicant. Would not be compatible with what is sought to be accomplished through this potential zone change. Area one to be largely BT, including the BT rezoning. Including that BT rezoning is compatible with the surrounding uses and neighborhood character. Expansion of the industrial use. Uses adjacent to the now BT zone is not sound planning, especially where potential residential development would be allowable and desirable. Item C. Suitability of uses posed by the zoning amendment and property affected by the amendment. This board has reviewed detailed uses that are permitted in the business transitional zone of the town, while some of the uses are allowable in the industrial zone. Most intense industrial uses would be prohibited in BT zone. This prohibition is the desirable considering. The findings as per item A and item B above. The business transitional zone is intended to provide a transition between less intensive uses and the more intensive uses that would be. Able with adjoining areas. Accordingly, even if the multifamily apartment use was not constructed, some other permitted. Some other use permitted in the BT zone was developed, this will create better compatibility and transition with the bulk adjacent uses. The BT corridor and the neighborhood. Again, it bears mentioning that considering the discussion above, any change in an already existing BT zone to industrial would. Counter the goal sought by the change. Of the bulk of area one to BT. Such a change to industrial could cause an intensity of industrial use of the land should not be permitted as it would be. Compatible with the zone changes sought here in the neighborhood overall. Accordingly, such a zone change is not recommended. Further zone change of the rear of area one for BT to industrial would ultimately require a resubdivision of that area into the Northwood Business Center lot. As a split one, split lot zone would be commuted, which is not sound planning. And any separate lot would be landlocked, which would not be permitted under subdivision regulations. Or industrial lot. Would exacerbate the potential. For compatibility allowing for larger and more intensive. Industrial uses, which is currently not present or possible in the area. Item D. Availability of public services and infrastructure generally suitable and adequate for uses allowed within the proposed district. Public water, sewer, inadequate road infrastructure are all available in this area for any uses, including those proposed by the zone change. Item E, does the zoning change serve public good or does it criminally benefit the individual property owner? With respect to the area one zone change from industrial to BT. Uh, for all reasons stated above, including compatibility with the neighborhood goals. Neighborhood goals and the comprehensive plan and sound planning principles support. The zoning change, however. As to the rear portion of area one, there is not a susceptible reason as to why the change from already compatible zone. BT to industrial was threatening of an individual. Further, it is the reasoned opinion of this board that keeping the zoning in area one as business transitional. While also effectuating a subdivision that would result in a complete. Substantial sized lot zone BT could result in better and more compatible BT development. Item out, if the parcels. If the parcels able to be reasonably developed, the uses permitted in this district. Because there is an existing use on part of the subject parcel subdivision would need to be pursued. So that the major portion of area one could be appropriately and separately developed. As there is already development on that parcel to the east. Once the subdivision occurs, which is a separate action. The resultant lot consisting of substantial frontage on Collin Road would be sufficient in size and configuration. To reasonably accommodate a BT use allowed. District should. Be all of the bulk requirements of the code. Area two would need to be resubdivided into Northwood Business Center parcel, creating a conforming lot. With access to Collin for the industrial use. That exists thereon. Finally, the remaining BT lot would be of substantial size and reasonable configuration to accommodate the residential use. That is already on it. With respect to that lot, any future BT use should be the current use. With respect to that lot, any future BT use should the current use be abandoned or changed? Could be accommodated on that substantial remaining lot. Conclusion, this board recommends to the Town Board that area one on the attached map with one. Be rezoned from industrial to business transition. No zone change should be. Item two, no zone change should be considered or approved. From BT to industrial for the northerly most portion of sixty four seventy five Collin Road. And item three, that area two remains zoned industrial. Further, this board finds that the application. For subdivision as currently presented by the applicant applicant is not ripe for review by this board unless. Or until the Town Board acts on the zone change in accordance with this recommendation for others. Further, the subdivision application, which has not yet been deemed ready for review and is currently proposed, will require secret review. Result of a potential subdivision in its current proposal, without appropriate zoning modification, would create split zone parcels. And it is therefore unlikely that a negative declaration. Percent will be issued. This board further recommends that no zone changes or modifications to the zoning map be made final by the Town Board until the planning board acts on. Appropriate subdivision application of the applicant. Which provides all documentation necessary for review and creates single zone parcels that are not landlocked or otherwise consistent with the Town Board. Zone changes, if any.
Think there should be another map that zoomed out that shows the business transitional relation to its surroundings.
Yeah, that we were discussing on the phone.
Yeah, but if I would zoom out, you know.
Well, also, I mean, the Town Board, this is the recommendation that Town Board should be reviewing it anew. They should be looking at all of these things that we look at as well.
Yeah, I think we'd say for it to go to the Town Board and make it easy on them. Give them everything that we talked about forever.
Um, is there any further discussion?
Appreciate that.
No. Uh, motion to approve the recommendation, Kevin. Second, on favor. Okay, so that recommendation will go to the Town Board. You know, we'll have to get you back here and talk about subdivision and. All that stuff.
Are they gonna notify me of that appearance like we do here?
Well, so this is going to the Town Board. Now it's up to them to decide. You know, if they're gonna take up the application, but they don't even have to take it up because of this legislation, but I I think they will. Um, so I think it's um, the Town Attorney. Will. Will be given this recommendation and then bring it to the supervisor and they'll put it on. An agenda.
Somebody sends out an agenda to us, so I just want to tell that.
Yeah, they they certainly.
I don't think they send agendas out. It will be on the town website, but I don't think they send agendas out.
Alright, so the next meeting is January, it's on Monday night, it's January sixth?
Yes, but.
Yeah, they may not act on it January sixth, but they'll at least get at that meeting, they'll get our recommendation.
Yeah, and the sixth is their organizational meeting for the year, so it might not be on that one.
Have I already um submitted an application for the subdivision?
Yes.
But it's it's can't be acted on until.
No, no, I just wanna make sure that everything I have submitted. In line.
Right, so I think that what the applicant, what this resolution was saying is. If if this gets acted on, then we don't know what they're gonna do. Maybe they'll do something different. Maybe they'll say no. You know, then we have to look at that subdivision in context of whatever happens at town.
Yeah, so once we get it after then, we'll work together and. Get the subdivision.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the applicant, I was before this board several months ago. Uh, for a two lot subdivision. For a property located at forty five seventy five and forty five seventy seven. Report evident. Uh, to recognize that the netter needed to be referred to the ZBA because the variance is required. Um, the property has on a two. Existing structures on one hex parcel when proposing the subdivision, so they would stand. Mutually apart. I've been working diligently with Alab, Etrel and Eric Ballen, who've been kind of wrestling with this. But working proactively with each with each other. And we come up with um, an application to the ZBA. Which has to speak for referral. Um, there's sixteen variances and we've learned eight through percent. Yeah, every time we thought we had it nailed down, there's another one that came up, so we 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 finally got that done. So the purpose of my period is to make that report advise you that that application is free. To be the referral from this board to the ZBA was for the consideration.
We made a bunch of findings in the last January resolution, which was missing some of the variances, we were just so many, so. We're not gonna go and repeat every finding right now.
So I'm I'm not gonna go through this, but there are eight variances per lot. Correct. Any discussion on the variances? Motion modify the prior recommendation of the ZBA. Or relative to certain variances required. For this site's recommended variances for the proposal, both two site. Two sites are as follows. The findings of the original recommendation remain void force in effect. Sit by everyone? I'll move. Presentation double second favor. Great.
Thank you very much.
I would all the change.
Well, we don't have sixteen variances. We do, however, have two. We we do have to for a zone change. So I don't know if we want to go before or after sixteen variants. Either they're either worn out. Or maybe discuss it, but um. So so we've we've received some engineering comments, some comments, what's that? Oh, Kurt Charlemagne.
Every time one of these days I'll remember.
With Colliers Engineering this night, so we're the engineering, uh, doing all the civil engineering on behalf of. So since since we met last, um, we've worked with town, we've identified the couple of variances, the two are that we're submitting for are the parking variances. Um, we have four hundred and twelve spaces parked on the site, three hundred and twenty bank. Um, I think it's a forty four percent uh ask in terms of reserved parking. Uh, which obviously exceeds the the Town Code. Um, the other variances for uh the location of the dumpsters. Um, and technically in the front yard which faces Fly Road, however, in this case, you know, there's a. Monstrosity of a hill, lots of vegetation, uh, not even visible from Fly Road and also sheltered by the building in the truck box. So it makes the most sense to kind of have it located there. Personal factor is kind of one of them as well, so it's utilized as a dock. If you use a low end and stuff like that, so that's our other variance requests. Up in the front yard. So so those are our various asks. Um, we're working through engineering comments. We're gonna work with Mark, we're gonna work with with Ron and. Eric. Um, and hopefully by the next meeting, maybe we can have everything resubmitted. We've been submitting some materials along the way. To approve things like that, so we're a long ways. Hopefully flush it all out soon. Let's get back to Brian as soon as possible. Maybe we can, maybe we can have a workshop or something here and there. Just to make sure all of our stuff is ironed out so that we can hit that, because obviously we're. We're all aware that we're working on that clock to get some trade your vote before.
Mark, yeah, you're you're still awake? Uh, any additional comments?
No, no, I mean, they've they've received the comments um. And and and, you know, we we've discussed drainage, et cetera, so I would expect that they'll be able to address those.
Okay, I think going, there's one that I would like to just kind of bring up that we did discuss at one of their meetings, there's. There's a comment that showed back up in terms of the sidewalks on Fly Road. The comment that we got from Mark was provide sidewalks along Fly Road. I think we discussed, I mean, there's no sidewalks along Fly Road. We extended a sidewalk to the Fly Road right away. But I guess we don't really have a.
Two fly roads?
Yeah.
Like for a bus stop or?
We extended a sidewalk out to Fly Road.
To Fly Road, we were creating that area for a bus stop, right?
Well, we're not creating, well, we haven't had any lot contracts in central, we talked about. So I mean, if if we get some communication, maybe we can iron some things out there to make, but as far as.
There was a county comment on having sidewalks, and that's when your first looking at apology and TTM was on the agenda. There were a few things along Fly Road. On the agenda at the same time, and they were saying to start creating a network along there since we're seeing so much development. You know, to have bus stops and connection between the different parcels, so. If it's something we think we could start doing along Fly Road.
Yeah. I don't, I mean. I don't think that's anything that we can review the Town Board, right?
Well, I mean, just understanding the comment in terms of the cycle line. Well, I, I mean, just understanding the comment in terms of the site plan application, because obviously that's a whole nother can of worms. I mean, there's work with the OT, there's, you know, the speed, there's how you're gonna parallel. Is it even fit? Because there are, at least on our side, it's on slope, it's a big hill. So they're not even feasible on that side of the road. So I just want to make sure, you know, that isn't a comment that hangs over.
Well, I mean, it, it'll hang there at least for the short term. Talk about it.
Um, it's not one we can address right now, this, yeah, so. Yeah, but I mean, I think I suppose, I think we'd like to look at, you know, if it is all the slope and everything right there and. What we gotta do along that back corridor or something.
We'll, uh, we'll talk about it. Safe?
We didn't talk about the sidewalk anymore. I don't want to take this board's up.
Um, alright, I'm gonna offer a recommendation to the ZBA for those two variances. Now, this is a recommendation to the ZBA with respect to the two requested variances. This project has undergone significant review and site plan review as upon filing. However, with respect to the variances sought, this board has determined that it has sufficient information to determine that variances sought will enhance the project and move it toward a reasonable site plan. Accordingly, this board recommends as follows with respect to the reserved parking. This board may allow. A reserve of up to twenty-five percent of required parking spaces. The applicant requests an increase in reserve from twenty-five to forty-four percent. Accordingly, the total number of parking spaces required by the code is seven hundred and twenty-six. There are four hundred and fourteen spaces shown on the site at a twenty-five percent reserve, a hundred and eighty-one point five spaces can be placed in reserve by the planning board. The planning board has determined that it will, on final site plan review, place a hundred and eighty-one point five spaces in reserve. Accordingly, a hundred and thirty-one additional spaces will need to be placed in reserve, and this board recommends the same. The applicant has shown that given the unique use of this facility, that it is unlikely that parking spaces in reserve will be necessary. However, in the event that additional parking is required, the planning board requests that the following condition be a condition of the variance. Upon observation of the Department of Planning and Zoning, or complaint that the parking on site is inadequate due to traffic backup. Parking on the right away or adjacent sites on a regular basis, the matter will be referred back to the planning board for modified site plan approval. For the sole purpose of evaluating the need and extent of the reserved parking that we, that will be required to be built. The planning board will then determine and require a modification of the site plan to include, to include all or a portion of the parking in reserve to be constructed. Including timeframe of completion of the same. The property owner's failure to either appear for site plan modification or build spaces required by the site plan modification. Will be site plan violation and subject to all penalties available. In all events, planning board will be requiring all appropriate site plan models to be developed at the time of current site plan review. The board is assured that the reserved and developed is required. And in respect to the code requirements, the dumpster area may not be located in the front yard. This board has determined that under site plan presented, the location of this property and the intended use of the property, the front yard dumpster may be suitable for this site. Accordingly, this board recommends that the zoning board allow a variance to allow. Planning board to approve a site plan which allows for a dumpster area in the front yard. Subject to such reasonable conditions regarding location, configuration, and aesthetics of the planning board need requirement. Any discussion?
Why would we put a half response reserve?
I was wondering that. That's the way I'm. Why can't we round it up?
I'd also like to know that you mentioned four hundred and fourteen, there's four hundred and twelve spaces. There was four hundred and fourteen, we removed two spaces because there was a landscape buffer stuck back near bone joint. So it's four hundred and twelve spaces on site now. To avoid a variance.
Does that change the percentage to like forty-one percent?
It's not, okay. I, I think, I think it was forty-three when.
They rounded it out to one eighty-one. Forty-four percent.
It's forty-four.
So, four twelve, we round up thirty, yes, you round up to one eighty-two. And then you add one thirty additional.
Two more. You have to add two more, so it would be. One eighty-four. Cause you add from three four. You have to add.
Twenty-five percent doesn't change. That goes, that stays at one eighty-two, but then the other, the extra reserve, you're right, it would be one thirty-four.
We have three hundred and twenty, so it's more than that.
The places in reserve.
Right, you're, you're providing more than the seven hundred and twenty-six, so we need them losing that.
I think we have seven hundred and thirty-four total on site, so we have three hundred and twenty, so we have extras anyway, so.
Well, we're trying to, I need a calculator.
It's on your phone typically.
So what is, it's.
Well, the total number of parking spaces required is seven twenty-six.
Yes, right.
Alright, so seven.
But you're saying there's more than seven twenty-six on the site.
Correct, we have four hundred and twelve onsite, three hundred and twenty across the street.
Right, so.
Then thirty-two.
Right. So if seven twenty-six was required, then the twenty-five percent doesn't change.
Right. One eighty-two.
Right. So seven twenty-six. Minus smart card, four twelve. Is three hundred and fourteen.
We have six actually.
And you're providing three twenty. So.
Yeah, we can still keep it at one eighty-two and, and as long as we have the flexibility.
Because twenty-five percent, we wouldn't allow them more, we would allow them less in reserve. So we would say we would allow them one eighty-one in reserve. And we would want them to provide seventy-five percent parking, which would be the extra half. So it would be in reserve, one eighty-one that they're allowed, twenty-five percent.
So then, read one D that you have on the other side, minus one eighty-one, right, is one hundred and thirty-nine.
You got the calculator.
In the morning.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, like right now, yeah, yeah, not so much.
So we'll fill those numbers in. Any other discussion? Motion to approve the recommendation, Kevin, last in, all in favor? Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Plus one eighty-one. One eighty-one plus one eighty-three.
Chargers.
Thank you, everybody, and happy holiday.
Thank you. Alright, back to the chargers, so this is Portard.
Bridgette, you still awake?
Still there, Bridgette?
Yes, barely, no, I'm just kidding. Uh, yeah, so, we, we talked about this project last time I was here, and we went back and realized there was a drainage easement up against the building there, so. I'm here today to talk about a new location. Um, so if you remember, we had them right up in the green space, right up against the building, and we talked about screening and. Went through that, but there is a twenty-foot, uh, drainage easement there, so. Now we are looking at putting them in the actual parking spaces themselves. Um, the next page will show a little bit closer of a breakdown of that. Yep, so. Um, the way the chargers are positioned is that they'd be facing opposite directions, so they'd be offering charging to the spaces in front of them. Um, and actually. Eric. Was kind of kind enough today, I can share my screen and just show. What that looks like.
But you're gonna share your screen?
Yeah, I can share just so you have an, I think it's kind of hard to follow if you're not, like, used to seeing, it's like a little bit of a creative design. We have designed this, we have not installed this at other places, but we have designed it like this, and we've seen others, um. Companies do this design before, so essentially you have a, a blank space here, uh, for just a standard car, not an EV, um, and then you have charging here, here.
Any one of those spaces within the radius is, is an EV spot.
Yeah.
Right?
Oh.
Any one of those spaces within the radius of that charger works, an EV spot.
For all practical purposes, yeah. If somebody in, in a gas car parked on one side, EV's gonna pull around the other side and just grab it.
Yeah.
Grab the.
Yeah, so you, it really, it, it would be transferable to anything in the, in this area, because the, the cables are running on the side, right, so you can just walk to the front. Um, but again, it'd be the same thing as we looked at with the other, with the other projects, it wouldn't be non-restrictive, uh, we'll make sure the signs get swapped out on these plans as well.
The only time I've ever seen this, this install work, is they're actually in the. They're in a buffer between the spots, because you, it's really hard to get a full-size vehicle in that full spot. Because of the reduction of the depth of the stall.
Yeah, how deep are these stops? Are these at the nineteen or are they?
That's nineteen, but it looks like they're pretty wide, they're a nine, uh, nine by six, um, so it is possible. Um, we'd have to look at how we, you know. If you were concerned about that, um.
We do require them to be nine foot six wide, so nineteen, nine and a half is the requirement there.
Oh, I, okay, I thought it was they were nine, okay.
Oh yeah, I mean, if we can't, if we can't.
Just gonna go look at the count here.
They're gonna take up. Code-required parking spaces, parking space and depth.
Yeah, I understand your concern with that, um.
Well, we were talking about this with Vivian and the clearance at the front of the vehicle. Right, making sure that there was enough space in front of the vehicle to the charging unit itself. This, this doesn't address that. This kind of ignores that. Right, that's me, you got ballards, you got, that's the only thing stopping the car from. But at that point, now you're not performing. Do we have?
What if this moved to the outside road?
Bridgette, how deep are these units? How much space?
Two by threes are the pads that we pour.
Eighteen inches.
Eighteen inch level size.
Plus, plus the ballards.
Plus the ballards.
The ballards are on the pad.
Yeah, the ballards are on the pads themselves, so those don't add at all to the depth.
What she said.
I know, that's, that's, yeah, that is baller, yeah.
Yeah, they're on, the, the, so like right in front of the stations is the ballards are fixed.
No men at all, we, it's, it's small for us, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm not saying.
Something was on the agenda. Alright. So, yeah, we would have.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at a ballard.
Oh, I know, it's hard to see it from that, um.
Hey, keep going down, I don't think that's, I think that's just a post for the.
Sorry, can I share again? I think I'm just gonna share, like, just so it's easier.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's a photo.
Aren't the ballards in the corners, Bridgette?
I know this is, I know you guys don't like this design, because this is the really tall, um, cable management system, but so just, and that part's not there. Um, okay, so this is how the ballards are fixed, so they're right there on the pads themselves, they're bolted right to it, um.
What option? Does it, they brought one up, you know, could those spots be farther to the west?
Two rows to the west and on the outside edge. Where they can get off this, nineteen foot deep. We cannot prove that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree, it's an uncomplimentary parking spot.
Okay, um, so, so what we need to, uh, consider is, is that we need a nine foot by six inch parking spot.
By nineteen.
Of it, by nineteen, okay, and. I mean, one thing I'm thinking of is if we have enough room. About what this, um. Without getting in the dry aisle at all. I'm just gonna, wanted to take a quick measurement to see if we could. How, how big the dry aisles are. Okay, so are you, are you saying shifting them down to the next section?
Are you sharing this room?
Two sections.
Yeah, so it goes all the way to the, to the pavement edge to the west.
So you can put them off the pavement and still maintain the nineteen foot, over right in front of the tractor trailer that's on the, in it here.
Oh, you're saying here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because then you can push them off of the required space for the parking spot.
Right.
Cause you, you may can't be within the parking lines.
Yeah. Okay, I can bring that, so one of the reasons why we'd had them here is just proximity to the MDP, which is the main distribution panel, which is located in here, which is what we're gonna be utilizing for power. But let me check with our, and, um, our, uh, EC on this and just see, and the engineers about. I don't think it's an issue to carry them across the parking lot, um. Or, you know, we'd be, we'd be, saw cutting across the parking lot to lay the conduit there. And putting them along this area.
Okay. Good? Okay, yeah, take it with that and let us know.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night, happy holidays.
You too. Alright, Taco Bell.
Right, and then they could share it.
So, why don't you, I know we've gone around.
There's like four more people in front of you.
I know you've updated the site plan, so take a moment, I would just give us a rundown of where you stand with the site plan.
Yeah, absolutely.
What's your name?
I'm John, with Natura Consulting, with me tonight, Mike McCracken with Hospitality Restaurant Group.
Your last name?
The set.
She has to put it in, that's right.
Layout plan.
What is the science to move the will?
Understand.
Don't be giving me one, you're kind of all.
It's your voice and laws for to sleep.
I think we might have wanted to, wanted to say.
Want to go one more down, John, or, or we're going back up? That's the old.
I think we're at this one, right? Um, so we're receiving comments from Mark Parrish, um, some of those comments regarded changes to the SWIFT. Including infiltration testing in the proposed infiltration basin at the northeast corner, um. We are working with him, get those, um, find out what the level of the groundwater there is. Make sure that that design is gonna be appropriate in that location. Couple of other things that have changed in the site plan itself, we've provided. This is the latest layout, uh, we provided bike racks in this area here.
What did you provide, sorry?
Uh, bike racks.
Oh, bike racks.
Yeah, uh, as requested, um, I know Alana had spoken to us. A little bit earlier about changing the location of the sidewalk along marginal road, um, we were gonna coordinate with Rocco. On that one, to move it away from the road, to provide a little bit more safety. For pass, uh, for pedestrians. Otherwise, um, instead of providing a sidewalk here through the main parking area, we've provided this straight area. As we discussed at the last work session, we're fighting just our ability to drain the site. Couple of projects we've done in the area, we're fighting that high groundwater table. Um, so we can't necessarily put structures in, we kind of have to sheet blow everything to get it to be able to drain. So we can't necessarily put structures in, we kind of have to sheet flow everything to get it to be able to drain where it's currently discharging from the site. But we've tried to provide a five-foot striped area down the middle of this parking area, including uh additional crosswalks just to get pedestrians around the site. Uh, we've changed the layout of the sidewalk here, connecting these two parcels, including that sidewalk crosswalk here. We need uh from some of Mark Parrish's comments, we've also provided additional granite curbing along our driveway here. So from our last work session, those are the major changes that have happened. Oh, and we've also um added very recently, as of today, uh, some down building mounted lights at the service door and these two windows. I have that playing with me if you have an interest in seeing that tonight.
Yeah, I think we'll want to get a full, with the package or remark to take a look at.
Absolutely. And I know we need to still submit that to Jack.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely. And we tried to include those on the plans as well, but we'll be submitting next. Okay, um.
Mark, do you have any initial comments?
Um, I think there's uh some additional comments. They'll get transmitted shortly, I believe, to the applicant, but um, nothing that's you know, um too difficult for him to take care of, I think so. And, and we have had discussions about drainage, so they, they know what they need to do there.
Other questions from this board?
Actually, I'm sorry, let me, uh, what's the status of the relocation of the National Grid easement?
So, uh, Mike McCracken from Hostile Restaurant Group has spoken with National Grid. Don't have anything in writing, but they've given a verbal okay to moving that easement at uh owner's expense. So we know that we would need to provide that to you as well as the town.
Yeah, but don't we have it?
Yeah, yeah.
So what's the status of the design option that eliminates the, the driveline off of Bridge Street?
So we've spoken with Mike McCracken, um, plenty on this one. Think it reduces the usability, the circulation. Too much of this, of the site. We've spoken with Jeff Deep, uh, he's seen this new layout, he uh, the DOT's high made of permitting. He's agreed that this is no K-location as long as we're restricting it to the right in, right out access. Um, I've got that email. I'm happy to share with everyone we've spoken with, boarded our transportation engineer.
Well, I'm sorry, but what was their, what was their finding with regards to the site? It's okay to do it, but they didn't have any other opinion about the site development itself.
Uh, his uh provisions may be needed during the design review process, but we still conceptually approve of the right in, right out access to Bridge Street, the access to marginal road, enterprise parkway, and the onsite layout for the twelve-five twenty-four.
Alana, I recall some discussion about um that marginal wasn't always the best, you know, for all traffic.
Well, what Jeff said is if that, any part of that driveway was eliminated, they would have to run the models again to see how it would impact that intersection because any traffic you take off Bridge Street, it's going through marginal road, that's going to impact how often that light gets triggered, which can impact uh how Bridge Street moves. So that they would have to rerun the model if that was something we were seriously looking at.
So if you're coming in off of Bridge Street, you can't make that first quick turn. It looks real sharp. I'm only asking. Is it planned to go the full loop around?
Sorry, this one here?
Yeah, you can make.
You were gonna show uh
two areas. Yes, uh, which unfortunately I didn't bring with me. Um, we've provided twenty-five feet here as well as this twenty-four-foot drive aisle. This, we've run it again and again. You have plenty of opportunity to even straighten out your car here if there's any backing after this.
You want me to hit my curb, my rim?
There's no curbing right there, right?
Can I speak to that just for a minute, just as?
It just looks sharp to me in the.
Yeah, and I, and I, I as well wanted to go around to some of our sites and I, what I did is I went over to Erie Boulevard, the site here in Duette. And the island that's there that you have to do the loop around from the, that's only fourteen feet. And what's worse, it's fourteen feet, but you're actually against the curb line. So this, you have the other driveline in between you, so it even creates a thirty, I think thirty-seven feet. But over near Erie Boulevard with my truck, I was able to come in off the traffic light, hug the curb and still make it around that fourteen feet. It's, and that's twenty feet less. So it, it's quite, it, it's quite roomy. You may look at on this because of that movement, it's not as our preferred move. I mean, we, we prefer a straight into the drive-through, but we have a number of uh restaurants with this type of configuration. We have to come deeper into the site and then come back towards the drive-through.
I think my biggest objection, and I raised it last time, is the distance, the travel distance, the separation between the parking field and the building, you have to cross over the drive-through. And I think that's that's just, I think it's bad practice. I don't think, I, I don't think it's a pedestrian friendly site in that respect. And I think that's because, it's because of the site circulation with the drive-through. This is the only way you can get it to work on the site. With the Erie, oh, I'm sorry, the Bridge Street, right in, right out. So that's why I was really pushing to see that design, the building slides down, it makes that circulation of the drive-through a little bit easier. And then I think you can get more parking up towards the top of the site where you can have a direct connection. That's kind of what I was looking for. At least I wanted to see that, how it played out.
Hmm, understood. Um, again, after, you know, speaking with Hostile Restaurant Group, talk about, um, this, this access is extremely valuable to them. We can.
Yeah, e- access on, from Bridge Street is probably critical to the project in our eyes. That, that's a heavily traveled uh road, as everyone knows. We need to be able to capture so mu- so many of the cars. It, we're gonna, we're gonna drive.
Somebody coming from six ninety.
He's gonna, they're gonna take a left, they're gonna take a left.
No, I know that. But how does somebody know to take a left? If I'm, if I'm driving down six ninety and I want to get Taco Bell for dinner on my way to Utica. Drive by truck. Right. So that's exactly it. So how, how is somebody aware that they need to make a left at that light? Going to marginal in order to get in there, or are they gonna go by and try and make a left-hand turn into that right old lane?
Well, ho- hopefully not, but I mean, if, if, if you're new to the area, you may do that. I, you know, comparing it to other sites, I mean, I would even say the same about Chick-fil-A. If you, if you don't know how to get into Chick-fil-A.
And that's a.
No, I understand.
Discussion on our.
I, I, I get that, but um, there's still, it, it'll be pretty wide open. There's not a lot of uh structures or anything in your way to not see that there's a, there's an easy in off the traffic light. Now, most of this roadway are people commuting that do it every day. You know, they come back and forth, back and forth. You, you, you tend to figure it out after a while. I'm gonna layer on my kind of next question to that, the pork chop that's there. What is that? Is it raised? Is, is it that curb?
So it'll all be concrete curved here, just to keep that drainage.
Granite.
Sorry, apologies. Granite curving, I promise. All, everything on the site is granite curbed uh along this driveway, uh, along.
And that's pork chop here. Well, the pork chop out of the entry. So I think the radiuses that are out at that right in, right out, in order to prevent somebody that's like, oh crap, I forgot to turn down marginal way, I'm just gonna cut across a start of a turning lane and two other lanes into a right old lane, you know, where somebody's trying to like, it's a.
That radius is part of state DOT's design review when they get the highway work. So look at the location sidewalk relative to their shoulder and all of that. So all of that design review happens once they're doing that.
Right.
So that might change a little.
The radius, but we can still, I mean, I'm kind of like what's that leads into Marshalls. Uh, something that's raised.
It divides the two lanes.
Right, that, that's, yeah, that's visible enough that, you know, somebody's not.
Uh, this curving here?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so there would be, there would be curving here to try to deter people from making that left from Bridge Street.
I mean, done tires right there too, so. Are they just a curve?
I had two sets of tires.
Um, but I think, I mean, we need to make sure that we do whatever we can, make sure that that is not an advertised way of getting into this, into the site.
Absolutely, I, I.
I mean, I don't mind you capturing traffic moving east on Bridge.
Right, like. We're, we're absolutely open to any suggestion there. Do you have any sites that come to mind of something that does that well? We can take a study of that and try to implement that down here.
Yeah, like you wind, you wind that out.
Right.
So you get a center median raised element in there. So if you're trying to take a left from six ninety, you can go, I can't bake that left.
I mean, that's even, if, if that, to your point, if that drive out does, those radiuses widen so that pork chop comes further into the site, like, yeah, like what you just
Yeah, I'm drawing.
Through there, so that it comes further in, so it looks like two lanes. Instead of somebody overlooking the island and thinks that's just a
with a trivia. They won't let me make that left turn.
Um. Just. Throwing our ideas out there, what if we split this driveway for a little bit of a distance?
That's, that's what we're saying.
Okay, okay, so to, to bring this out of this direction.
You, you know, there's, you know, if you're trying to make the left, there's a curb there that's a element that's enough mass, but it's obvious things going.
Let me get one of our trends. Okay, absolutely.
Marshalls has landscape, you can play rights.
What?
Marshalls has.
Marshalls landscape, yeah.
That looks really nice.
You have to go to Marshalls, that's oversized, but uh, what do you have?
Like no sign.
It's a nice feature, actually.
John, I would work with Jeff to make sure it's going to be an approved design.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I know that that.
So, so as far as the uh variances, the few variances that we need, can we get a referral for the variances? We're getting, here's what my fear is, we're, we're out of time on our contract. We're Dave is, you know, Dave, everyone knows Dave, he's already uh to the point where he's looking at other people to take the site over. And uh, so I'm a little concerned that we at least get in front of ZB A. Well, we, we need it, we need two, what do we need? John, we need a.
We need three, so we will need the front yard setback, um landscaping, uh, buffer as a pinch point and then the built-in height to, to.
So when's the next ZB A and when's our next meeting? Because ZB A is January twenty-first, but that deadline is
on December thirtieth, their deadline.
So can you get us an application by December thirtieth and then recommendation on the ninth?
Right, they do those ZB A recommendation.
Do the ZB A application by the thirtieth and then they can be on the maybe or six, nine.
Nine.
You need nine.
Yeah, for any board recommendation.
Yeah, we should be able to leave that done.
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, I see. Thank you. Of course, any other questions?
Out of the Wegmans and taking a left, out of that sidewalk?
No, no, Tennessee into Wegmans.
Tennessee into Wegmans.
On that big split.
Vision.
It, like after the bank, you. For the thing.
This one here?
Yeah.
Right, so people come in here and they're taking this huge, long line, you know, like, I don't want to wait in a line, so I'm just gonna go across three lanes of traffic.
Oh, my God, I've never seen that.
I, I see it all the time.
But Jamie, that is where she goes, my tires got ripped and that giant pop goal and ripped the sidewall right off my tires.
But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Well, last, so we have any other answers?
I don't believe so. Any other questions, comments? Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
Do some work on those. And if you go to application.
Get your tires tomorrow, so.
She's got the tires, my classmate, my car, do you know how many miles? You know, how many miles? Four thousand, I had three thousand seconds.
Good point, that's important.
No, it's like.
One last item that we are covering.
How?
Uh, it's motion for the board, whatever they hear, we've got retain both Mark and Jamie. Um, it'll be open to any discussion. There's opposition to that.
I'm gonna use myself.
Not making stuff away.
Jamie's like. Jamie's like, I shot.
Yes, yeah. All right, here we go. Motion to approve consultants for the planning board for the year twenty twenty-five. Mark Parrish, Rambo, Rambo as engineer for the planning board under same term and conditions as the twenty twenty-four contract. And Jamie L. Sutkin as fire, Baldwin Sutton, Baldwin Sutton P L L C as attorney for the planning board under the same terms and conditions for the twenty twenty-four contract. Motion to approve them, if I will second, on favor. One back.
I missed, I was to run. Think about.
Uh, thanks, thanks, guys. Have a good Christmas.
Thank you. Here, Mark.
If you were coming, you'd have gotten me, you didn't.
Second, on a very good meeting. Great, thank you. Yes.
How's your voice feeling?